Okay, I'd like to call the order of the special meeting in the Butte Silver Bowl Council Commissioners Special Meeting for Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. Can we have a roll call, please?
We have 12 yea and 12 present and zero absent, sorry. Present, zero absent.
Thank you. We got 12 present, zero absent. Commissioner Sorge, could you please lead us in the prayer?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. As we make decisions which will greatly affect our community at Butte Silver Bowl, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. All right, I'll call for any public comment on any items on the agenda tonight. Commissioner Shaw.
We do not have any written comments, and we're just now checking for any calls coming in. Chief Executive.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
It doesn't appear that we have any calls coming in.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. So we'll call for the special meeting. JP Gallagher, Chief Executive, is calling for a special meeting, February 24th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting is for the Council of Commissioners' concurrence for the Civic Center Road closure traffic plan and designated detour route. This is Communication Number 2021-96. Mark Neri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners' concurrence and authorization on behalf of the Intermountain Construction Services for Civic Center Road closure of the traffic control plan and designated detour route. The road will be closed from the eastern Civic Center parking lot to Texas Avenue. Do we have Director Neri available?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioners, this, we had to do this, we asked for the special meeting because it was time-sensitive. We had the pre-construction meeting for the Parrot Phase Two construction project and realized that we were turning it over March 1st, which is this Monday coming up. So that's why we had to have the special meeting, getting it on the agenda for tonight. I believe you all received a description of what the road closure plan was. It's going to have to be closed down for the duration of the whole project, and we just want to get it before the Commissioners tonight.
Thank you, Director Neri. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mark, after reading this a little bit closer, that walking trail is going to be closed down completely also. That was my concern, is keeping the kids and their bikes and everything else out of that area. I'm sure they're going to do, you know, there's a plan, but I guess I didn't see that in that pretty fine print that it said the walking trail is going to be closed down also. Correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. Director Neri?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioner Sorge, that's correct. And it'll be an extensive closure to, it's pretty apparent that we, important that we keep everybody out of that area. So it will be closed down also.
Thank you, Mark.
Commissioner Callahan.
Thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. Mr. Neri, do you have any kind of a timeframe on this? How long would it take?
Thanks, Commissioner Callahan. Director Neri?
Thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioner Callahan, it's approximately two and a half years.
Oh, wow.
Thanks, Director Neri. Commissioner Mankins?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. So Director Neri, is there a way that you could think of that maybe possibly that we enclose that walkway? Is there a way to make it like kind of plywood tunnels or something that would actually access, have access for the kids or the public?
Thank you, Commissioner Mankins. Director Neri?
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioner Mankins, we didn't think it would be safe to do anything in there. There's, you know, they're going to be taking that top off and taking that whole elevation down, and I think they're, they'll probably have some protection up just for dirt rolling into the, down towards the creek area. So I just don't think that they thought it would be safe to have anybody going through there at that time.
Thank you, Director Neri. Any other questions? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mark, so after the two or two and a half years, will that road be reopened, or is that going to look like it's going to be a change in the configuration of the whole area?
Thanks, Commissioner Shaw. Director Neri?
Thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioner Shaw, it will be reopened, and there'll be curb and gutter and sidewalk through the whole thing. There, there'll no longer be a hill. It'll just be a gradual slope from the back of the Civic Center to the bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Director Neri. Any other questions? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would move to approve the Public Works Director's request of concurrence and authorization to make these important closure, traffic closures, and place this Communication 2021-96 on file.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Communication and authorize and place on file, and we have a second. Anything on the question? Seeing none, could Commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote?
We have 12 yea and zero nay.
Clerks, please record the vote. We have 12 yea and zero nay. This concludes our special meeting. I take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Anything on the question? The special meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, and everyone will just continue with the committee of the whole without any further ado. Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. Okay, welcome now to the Butte Silver Bowl Council Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting, Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, and I believe the roll call remains the same. We have 12 present and zero absent. We will forego the prayer, although we could always use more prayer, but that's okay. We'll leave it at that. Under public comments, I do have a couple of comments to be read into the record, and they have to do with item, I'll just explain this, item seven. We added seven in only because it's a housekeeping, we have to place it on file. That is the request for an appeal from Larry Hoffman, and we took care of that last week. The action has been approved and the motion and everything has passed, but we had to place this on file. So it's literally still on the agenda, so I will read these two comments at this point on that item. Anything on the phones? Just checking that first. Doesn't look like we do. Thank you, Josh. Okay, I'll begin with Andrea Holland, who is here in Butte. Stop the demolition of our historic buildings. The HPC voted against demolition.
She's got.
Somebody needs to put their microphone on mute if that's possible. Stop the demolition of our historic buildings. The HPC voted against demolition, and the proper steps to follow should be taken instead of this crooked method of.
That too.
We have somebody that needs to mute their phone, please, or their computer. I love Butte and our historic buildings. It's one of the things that makes us unique and that we should pride ourselves in. Please stop the good old voice system that seems to be an okay anytime there's a vote in the Historic Preservation Committee against a demolition and stop the demolition. Thank you, and please just build on a vacant lot. That's from Andrea Holland. And the second one is from Ben O. Garwood, Butte, Montana. I love the old classic historical buildings in Butte. This town is an endearing microcosm of the history of not just its residents, but the entire nation. Preserving our identity as a cultural and historical icon is essential. That said, we are citizens of not just the past, also the future. Our culture, the history we write in the present, and our economy matter, and they matter a lot. If it is not financially sustainable, either publicly or privately, to maintain vacant buildings, it only makes sense to find a use for either the building or the land it sits on. I'm sure you'll receive a ton of loud voices in opposition to demolition of the Blue Range. Please don't let passion outweigh reason. Please respond to the best arguments, not just the loudest. Thanks for all you do, and all the best. From Ben O. Garwood. And that concludes the public comment at this time. Report of the chair, just, just one thing, if you, fellow commissioners, notice that every now and then you're getting a DocuSign, and it's, and it's for either a commissioner or a board, and in the past, we used to literally send a folder out around all the council members around our U here, and we would ask the council members to, to look at that because it's been sent to us by either the Butte Housing Authority, or the, I know the Sheriff's Department sends us reports, and most of us have seen those, but in the last year, we haven't seen any. So they are being actually sent to us on DocuSign. We used to initial them when they came around just by hand, and now we're going to be doing it online. So just in case you're wondering what that is all about, they're just a couple of items that they, you might find interesting and give you some background information on boards and commissions. Okay, Section One, bid openings, public hearings and/or presentations. We do have a bid opening. This is one, number one, Communication Number 2021-75. Mike Clegg, Deputy County Attorney, requesting Council of Commissioners' concurrence and authorization to schedule a Request for Repusal, RFP, opening on February 24th, 2021. The RFP is to provide for electronic monitoring for veteran court participants. The monitoring will be paid for from the Veterans Court BJA award. Do we have Mike Clegg or anyone that's speaking on his behalf? Or the, we have a staff report from anybody?
Um.
County Attorney Joyce?
First of all, there is proof of publication for this bid opening. And next, yep, this is, as you know, the Veterans Court was recently established in Butte Silver Bowl with the funding that Mr. Clegg indicates in his communication, and as part of that treatment court, they'd like to have their participants be subject to an electronic monitoring program, and they have asked for these proposals to be submitted to pick a provider to provide that service for the Veterans Court. And we have two requests for proposals that, if you're ready, I could open.
Okay, thank you, County Attorney Joyce. We're ready for grand opening.
Okay, the first proposal is from All Systems Monitoring, P.O. Box 4462, Butte, Montana, 59702. Yeah, I don't know that they are actual dollar amounts to be considered. Their proposals on, they, they do have a indication on what they would charge daily, monthly, 12 months and 18 months for remote breath, scram GPS, a cam monitor, rely alert, secure cuff GPS, and a drug patch. So that's their proposal. And I think that the Veterans Court will just need, Veterans Team will just need to review these to see what, which proposal provides the best service.
Okay.
So the second one is from Ben Thielen, 3210 Hannibal Street, Butte, Montana, AA bail bonds and monitoring. And he, his proposal indicates that he will provide sober link monitoring and GPS monitoring, and indicates his per day price and his per week price, his per month price, and a one-time installation fee, with the price to be adjusted as necessary. And that's the end of the two proposals.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Commissioner Frederiksen, I forgot to tell you that you will need to refer this to the Deputy County Attorney for their return back to us. Go ahead. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if it could just be the Veterans Court team?
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks, Madam Chair. I will make a motion that we refer this back to the Veterans Court team.
We have a motion in a second to refer the two RFPs back to the Veterans Court Team to come back to this body with their recommendation. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Thank you. Everyone, please vote. Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? It's like we're missing, okay, we have 12 yea and zero nay. All right, moving on, we're on Section One, Communications. Communication Number 2020-503. Dan Olson, Commissioner, District Five, requesting Council of Commissioners to address the following problem with Butte Silver Bowl Ordinance, Chapter 6.16. Livestock and domesticated hoofed animals, as currently written, is unenforceable by BSB and does not interface seamlessly with MCA 81-4-201 and 81-4-401 to allow the state to provide enforcement. I believe I will defer to Commissioner Callahan, and we'll just open an upward discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last time I talked to former Commissioner Dan Olson, he asked if we could request to put this in the suspense file for 75 days. That would be my motion, but if anybody else has any comment, we're more than glad to hear it. Thank you.
So is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, please.
Wait a second, motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move Communication 2020-503 into the suspense file for 75 days. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Mankins, and then Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Shaw. So what would be the reasoning to put it in the suspense file for 75 days? What, what's going to happen in the 75 days that I'm not seeing yet or knowing?
Commissioner Callahan, would you care to respond to that? You're on mute.
I believe they're hoping that we'll be back in the council chambers, and they can come before you folks to have a discussion with you on what their issues are, what they need to do to resolve them.
Follow up, Commissioner Mankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do and I don't. I just don't see the difference that they can't call in or do how everybody else, the public has to, and we have to conduct business at this time.
Commissioner Anderson, did you have a question?
No, Chairman Shaw, I was just going to iterate why we were going to do this, what Commissioner Olson's reasoning was, and what a few of the parties involved in this wanted, and that was their request. So I felt it was best to honor that request. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We're on the question. Seeing none, would everyone please vote?
Madam Shaw, I would like to ask something.
Oh, of course. Commissioner Frederiksen, and then Commissioner Anderson. Okay.
Thanks. All right, yeah, I just want to say, I guess I'm, you know, this has been on the agenda for a couple times now, where, I mean, it's on the committee of the whole agenda, but it's been in judiciary for, I don't know, this whole entire year, and we have not heard from any comments from the public for or against this. We, we know nothing. So I guess I'm, I'm kind of like Commissioner Mankins, wondering, you know, why we're putting this in the suspense folder for 75 days, and I think that that's been cleared up, but the cows are going to be out in the, the cows are going to be out to graze in 75 days. So I don't know how we can fix this problem. It would be nice if we could start working on it now and come to a decision, but I understand, I respect former Commissioner Olson's wishes, but, like I said, we haven't heard from one public comment on this thing, and we put it on the agenda for this very reason, and no one even submitted anything. So, I don't know, that's a little frustrating to me. That's all I wanted to say.
Commissioner Callahan, then Commissioner Fisher, and Commissioner Shea.
Well, this has been a problem they've been dealing with for three years. So they would like to come to the council and let everybody know the issues they've had, how they've been handled, how they haven't been handled, and that's their intent.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw. I kind of got to go along with Commissioner Frederiksen and Commissioner Mankins. You know, we talked about this a lot. This local ordinance and the state law ordinances or whatever, they just don't correspond, but I got to agree, no one's come forth and said anything or done anything. So at this time, I'd make a substitute motion to note and place on file Communication 2020-503. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. We have a motion in a second to place Communication 2020-503 on file. Anything further on the question on that matter? All right, well, now we are going to be voting on the substitute motion to place this on file. So is there anything on the question? I would ask that people vote. Please vote. Let's see. Can't submit it yet. Just give us a second here. We're regrouping on the vote. Okay. All right. Was that a note in place on file, Commissioner Fisher, or just place on file?
Note in place on file, please.
Thank you. That's what we got. All right. Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are six yea and six nay.
We have six yea and six nay. So we go to the first vote. The first recommendation was to move the communication into the suspense file for 75 days, and we're waiting to get this up on the board for you. If this is a regular meeting, we can get Chief Executive Gallagher to break the time. Okay, so this one is to move it to the suspense file for 75 days. Damn, we're getting there. We're still waiting to vote, so. Get there, Jason.
Chairman, it looks like you had a question or two.
It is.
Oh, on the question, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? I'm sorry. Commissioner Thatcher then Commissioner Shea. Thank you, Bill. Hattie, you're on, on mute. There you go.
Shoot, I think.
Hmm. Now you're off. Can't hear you. Oh, no. Now what? Is it okay? All right. Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't really have anything on the question since there's a motion waiting, and was just going to comment that the title on the poll is incorrect.
Right, we're working on that. Thank you.
I figured you were, but I, and it looks like Commissioner Thatcher was looking at too.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for Jason to get the title on there.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
2020-503, move to suspense file for 75 days. He's having a little bit of a trouble getting it put in there, so. All right, now we're getting there. No pressure. There we go. Oh, take the note and place on file.
I think Commissioner Sorge is trying to wade down.
Oh. Commissioner Sorge, you take out the note and place on file.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment also that Ed Randall, you know, at, at the meeting, I think there was some talk about maybe just cleaning up some language and different things, you know, in, one of the things by putting this note in place on file, and if there was any, anything else we wanted to do, there's just maybe some verbiage that could be changed in the ordinance. That's something that he would like to do, or maybe he and the county attorney can sit down and work it out. Is that correct, Mr. Callahan?
Like I said, I think people would like to come before the council and voice their concerns. That's what the request was by Commissioner Olson. That's what I put out there. Thank you.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I'll ask Eileen, but I think anybody can make a motion to end all motions, and we can go also to making a different kind of a request in, in the form of a motion. Eileen, is that correct? Kind of out of, out of order, but.
Yes, that's, yeah, that is correct.
Okay, thanks. So I'm, I'm opening it up to discussion if somebody would like to do that. Commissioner O'Neill, am I missing anybody's hand? Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know what? Now we're, now we're making motions to, on stuff. I don't even know what we're making motions on. I understand we're in the pandemic, but they have ample time to write in, call in, get on a computer to call in to do this. I think they need to even reestablish what they want. We don't, I don't even know what they want. I don't even know what's going on right now. We need, this needs a restart and needs to come from the source, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, well, we are still on, we're still on the original request to move this to the suspense file for 75 days. That's what we're making a vote on right now. And I, I will defer to Mr. Randall if he'd like to speak on this. We are in the middle of a, of a motion, but Mr. Randall, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If there's questions or concerns, I could surely answer them. This is, this issue was in front of judiciary for a few months. I felt that County Attorney Joyce and myself gave a, a, a pretty good presentation on, on what, what we felt we should do as far as the county attorney's concerns, and then, you know, our staff doing the work. We felt that a lot of the issues could be taken care of civilly, the other issues, and if you want me to go through the whole thing again, I surely would, but property issues of damage, there, there is a remedy in the ordinance that we have. I'll take you back just a few minutes and, and just state that my department, including myself, always felt that the intent of the ordinance wasn't to remove cattle, horses, or anything like that off private property if they go on someone's property. We felt that the intent of the ordinance was to ensure public safety, that animals were not on our thoroughfares, on our streets, and if that were the case, that we would take care of them, which we've done every year that I've been involved in animal services within the Community Enrichment Department. With that said, I, I believe that no one's heard anything from the folks who had concerns. We feel that we have the remedies in place to take care of the issues. We also feel very strongly that we're, we're really making some changes on a few people's concerns, and, and I, I've always believed that we look at the greater good in ordinances. I think that these ordinances could be fixed with some pretty simple amendments, clear up the ordinance to the pub. We could sure do some public announcements discussing and allowing people to understand what our intent is and what the ordinance states, what we will do. If we have animals that are truly If we have animals that are truly out of control on a private property, first and foremost, I think it would be difficult for us to have someone take those animals. I don't think that we should be doing it. So I think that a lot this time and concern for a couple issues isn't really what government should be doing. That's how I feel. So if there's any questions, I would be glad to answer them. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. And we are in the middle of a motion, so it's, you know, I need to hear, on the question, I need to hear from council members. Commissioner O'Neil? Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was what I was going to, wanted to reference. We are in the middle of a motion. We, so, I mean, we gotta go on with the motion. We can't, in my, we can't even discuss that. We have motions on the floor. We either gotta go with the motions or cancel them or whatever. We can't. That's my opinion. We, I mean, it's on the floor. Let's go. That's what we need to do, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further question, on the question, any other comments? We, if you recall, we are on the first motion that was to refer this to the Yeah, right, thank you. Anyway, for 75 days, we're to the suspense file, and this is Communication 2020-503, and Jason's going to put it up for us. Okay, would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Sir?
We have eight yea and four nay. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ed. We'll just be putting it in the suspense file and see where that takes us, I guess. All right, moving on to the next communication. Number 2021-53, Ellen Crane, Butte Silver Bow Public Archives Director, requesting council commissioners have the county attorney revise the Archives Ordinance number 2.56. The ordinance revision is necessary to reflect the actual Archives responsibilities and activities. We just, in the Judiciary Committee, we introduced the new ordinance changes, so I would ask Commissioner Fredrickson to make a cross-reference on this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to cross-reference Communication 2021-53 with Council Bill 2021-01 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference Communication 2021-53 with Council Bill 2021-01 and places on file. Anything on the question? All right, would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? We have one person that we don't have on the board. And who might that be? All right, we have 12 yea, zero nay. Thank you. Moving on to item three, Communication number 2021-63. Madeline Gregg, Thomas Development Associate, requesting council of commissioners' concurrence and authorization to schedule a public hearing for February 17th, 2021, for affordable housing and property tax exemption for Aspen Place Apartments. 68-unit senior affordable housing community located at 4,500 Continental Drive, Butte, Montana, 59701. And we did have that public hearing last week, so Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Communication 2021-63 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 2021-63 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? Or short a vote? Let's see. Is it coming up? Yeah, we're waiting for one vote. I'm not sure if we can look at the screen to see who is missing. Can I get a raise of hands on everyone that voted yea? All right, we're missing one, so we'll just take a, Justin? Here are you, yea? All right, 12 yea and zero nay. Communication number 2021-70, Lori Casey, Planning Director, requesting council of commissioners' concurrence and authorization to schedule a public hearing for February 17th, 2021, to hear comments on zone change application number 181, a proposed amendment to the official Butte Silver Bow zoning map. And again, that public hearing was given it on February 17th. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Communication 2021-70 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 2021-70 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? Everybody voted because we're short two. Now we have 11. We're short one. Uh, let's see, we're trying to see who we're missing here. Michelle Shea?
I voted yea.
Thank you. We have 12 yea and zero nay. Item five, Communication number 2021-75, Mike Clegg, Deputy County Attorney, requesting council of commissioners' concurrence and authorization to schedule a Request for Proposals, RFP, opening on February 24th, 2021. The RFP is to provide for electronic monitoring for veteran court participants. The monitoring will be paid for from the Veterans Court BJA award. We just had that this evening, so Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Communication 2021-75 on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to place Communication 2021-75 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? Still missing one. I'm not sure why. Let's see who we're missing. Another one here. Can you check that for me, Jay? Okay, 12 yea, zero nay. Item six, Communication number 2021-94, Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting council of commissioners to review the mid-year budget and projected revenue report for fiscal year 2021. Danette? You're on.
Okay, Madam Chair, commissioners, the media review was presented to you a couple weeks ago. I will just do a really brief comments on this, and then if you have some questions with follow-up, you can ask me now, or feel free to always contact me in my office. For the newer commissioners, every year in mid-year, our fiscal mid-year would be December 31st. The Finance and Budget Department does a complete review of our expenditures, revenues, more of a deep dive analysis than what we do on a monthly basis. And we compare budget to actuals on revenues and expenditures. We also look mainly at the major sources of revenue. So for the local government, of course, it's property taxes, user fees, SID fees, and then we look at some of the grant revenue compared to the grant expenditures that are being made. On the budget side, our major component is personnel costs, so we look at how we're doing compared to budget on personnel costs. And then the final section that we do, a final look that we look at is cash and investments, and then we also look at the fund balance and the change in the net position. So that tells me how healthy the financial position is of the local government. So on the budget side, the actual expenditures on December 31st were right on target. We're at midpoint, we had 61.6% of the entire budget remaining. That's very comparable to prior years. Within the general fund, there was over 57.6% of the expenditures remaining. When you look at the grant graphs and charts just quickly, some of them, when you went through the report, you might have noticed that in the debt service funds, it appears that we're higher on our expenditures than what we have remaining, and that's typical, mainly because our debt service payments, our principal and interest on our bonds are made on July 1st and by December, around December 31st for January 1st payment date. So that's very typical when you're looking at those funds. Also, in comparison from last year to this year, on the budget side, you'll see some changes within our enterprise funds. So if you're looking at the fund type comparisons, some of those differences were mainly just timing to do with projects. So in this particular year, we had the cell four expansion at the landfill mainly completed by December 31st, and payments made on that compared to what we had last year. And similarly with the 36-inch line for the water utility division. So on the revenue side, we're also looking very healthy. We had $70.67 million in revenue collected, which is 58.6% of our projections. Also, a comparison that I look at is to make sure that we at least have sufficient revenues coming in to cover expenditures, and that was the case on December 31st. We actually had $12.78 million in revenues over expenditures, so about 18%, which is also very consistent to prior years. And wanted to also note that if you look at some of the details on the revenue side, you'll see some changes in fund balances. A lot of that is a result of just capital projects and the timing of capital projects from one year to the next. For example, we might have completed more in the CIP project at Stodden Park in one year than we did in another. We could also have been doing some other additional work for Greenway projects or whatnot. So sometimes those fluctuate. When you're looking at the fund types and you're trying to compare year to year, you kind of mainly want to look at what's happening in the general fund and the enterprise funds to cut. Those should be very, pretty similar year after year at midpoint review. And then I also just want to point out, if you recall during the budget process, there were several areas where we had anticipated on the budget side, especially on the revenue projections, that we would be slightly down due to the impacts of COVID, which that in some cases has been true, but we also took that into account when we were reserving funds and whatnot, and they're not any worse. So right around, for example, on property taxes, we anticipated being down on our collections about 3%, and we're actually only down about 2.5% this time compared to a five-year average. So that's very positive, I think, right now, especially going into a time where we always tend to see a little bit less below the 50% collection on property taxes. It tends to creep up more with the make-tax collections. You know, people have different things that happen in their lives, such as bonuses or proper income taxes or whatnot, so they're able and have that income to pay taxes. So very positive revenue analysis. I'm very pleased with what I was seeing. Then also on the fund balance side, nothing really major has stood out, other than what we kind of had anticipated. The fund balance was the last section of the report, and on some of the funds, you might see, for example, this is typical, within the comprehensive insurance fund, Fund 2190, you'll see that there was like a negative fund balance at midpoint, which is normal because we have to pay for our property insurance and our liability insurance all by August, but the taxes are not collected until November and May. So that's typical, and that will come up again when we get our May tax collections, and we should be right on target. The only funds that we are looking at addressing as we move forward into the next budget cycle are the administrative service fees within the payroll and personnel department. We have to address those fees. And then also looking at some GIS charges that you will see in that fund balance report. When I, when you look at those particular ones, you'll see some negative fund balance, and that's because those revenues, we need to really look and analyze and come up with a plan to adjust the revenues to meet the expenditures for those two, for those departments. The other ones you might see that have some negative balances on December 31st would be in the, some of the grant funds, which is typical, they're reimbursable. Most likely, they didn't get their, the departments didn't get their receivables into us, which that is the case on these ones, because I did a deeper dive. The receivables were not loaded in prior to December 31st, what our cutoff timeline, so the revenues weren't loaded to match the expenditures, but we will be on target with them. The only other one that we will have to also be working on as we move forward into the next fiscal year is within the Greenway Service District. We know over the past few years, this has been pointed out a few times, that some of the early years within that program, a lot of administrative charges were not covered within the grant, and we're hoping to find ways to get that covered before that whole project's completed and the fund will be made whole by the time the whole Greenway district is in place. Again, very positive in conclusion. It was very positive. I was very, you know, hesitant and for the first time, kind of very nervous as to what the media was going to look like. Month to month, we were seeing what we thought was very positive, but it was, when we finally completed the media review, it was, again, very positive considering our community, you know, the COVID pandemic. It's been rough for people, but luckily, we're still be able to provide the services that our local government's supposed to be providing at the best ability that we can, and we're still meeting those revenue targets that we need to be meeting.
Thank you, Danette. That is great news. I was worried too about last year and the way COVID might affect people's abilities to do, you know, pay taxes, basically. So I'm proud of our community to be able to stick it out, and we didn't raise taxes last year, which helped too. Any other questions for Ms. Gleason on the midterm budget? Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, thank you very much for the good report and taking the time to do it. And this is kind of a, I know you don't have a, I can't read the crystal ball, but I know our legislature, there's a lot of bills on the table right now over there. Is there anything that you're seeing that might be changing this for the next, for budgeting session in July?
Ms. Gleason?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sorge, of course, things can always change the second half of the legislature. You never know what might be coming at us. There are some bills that are out there still in draft form that have not. We'll see if they get transmitted. I think the transmittal date is this week, as of Friday. So we'll see what comes out of the final transmittals. Right now, I'm not seeing anything directly that, you know, like in years past where we've had direct laws where they're changing mill levy caps, or they're changing, you know, some property tax stuff. We do have, there is bills out there that will most likely get passed on the business side related to personal property taxes, but that exemption has been creeping up on us for many years now. I don't know exactly how much that will impact us right now. So we'll have to see how that goes forward. I've had a lot of communications with some of our representatives trying to figure that out. Not significant, though, because remember, as we've already have an $100,000 exemption out there that exempts a lot of the smaller entities from personal property taxes. Then there are some other bills that, you know, I've used, that we'll have to be conscious of as we prepare, not just this budget, but as we look down the road as to what we do on this year's budget, how it could impact, you know, how we look at a five-year more look. Because, you know, anytime the state takes budget cuts on their level at some point in some time to maintain their funding for different things, then it kind of rolls downhill to the local government. And so, you know, they may cut certain services and then require us to pay on the other, on the backside. You know, we've seen that happen. We've seen that happen when the legislature had to have the special session in November of, let me think of the year. I'm sorry, 18 or 19, I'm sorry. But then when they have the special session, and we've seen like DPHHS have some big hits, especially in mental services and mental health and crisis. And so that just pushes pressure on our jail and our facilities and our law enforcement. And then on the other, on also then on how much we have to start contributing as a local government for mental health or other services, like similar to that. So, you know, we just have to be on guard, but nothing right now, Commissioner Sorge, that is a direct impact, other than the property tax on the personal property side.
Madam Chair.
Follow-up, Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Danette, for the, and I know I can say that we don't have a magic, or we can't look and see what's going on, but I know you're on top of it. We'll sit, watch real close. Thank you. We'll set watch real close. Thank you.
Any other questions for Danette on the midterm budget? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chairman Shaw. Thank you, Danette. Great report, once again. If you could just touch a little bit on police and firemen retirement. How are we looking on, you know, getting these people cast out in the future?
Ms. Gleason?
Madam Chairman Shaw, Commissioner Fisher. So as we've transitioned out, like our fire chief, for example, or other positions that are going out, though a lot of those positions have been funded either through, it's been rolling up. So for example, in the fire department, it was promoted, a promotion within, and so at the end, there's a vacant, potentially a vacant probationary fireman position that will help offset some of those costs. But if you recall, a couple of years ago, may have been even three fiscal years ago, this might be the third fiscal year, we upped the employee associated costs line item anticipation of many future retirements coming up. And then the chief executive has the authority, if a department head chooses, and it's a key position within that department, the chief executive can authorize us to use those funds so that a replacement doesn't have to take as long to vacate, to cost out all the vacation accruals and whatnot to pay out a person.
Any other questions for Gleason? Well, thank you again, Danette, as always, is very informative. It's nice to get a midterm report, so we kind of know where we're going. So it looks like we're doing well, so thanks again. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Fredrickson, would you like to place this on file?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place communication 2021-94 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication 2021-94 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Anyone want to change their vote? And would the clerk please record the vote? Now, we're short two, let's see. System is kind of slow counting. What's that? We have one more. Everyone has voted. Can I assume everyone voted yea? Yea? All right, Bill? Justin? Okay, we have 12 yea and zero nay. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty in this end, but that's okay. We can always go back to the voice vote. The last item on our agenda here is item seven, communication 2021-95. Larry Hoffman, 56 East Mercury Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council commissioners to override the historic commission recommendation, allow plans for demolition to move forward and clear the way for the work to proceed as soon as weather permits. As you know, this was done last week. It was for an appeal on their recommendation from the HPC. We did make that vote. It is final and passed. So at this time, I just need to have somebody place this on file for the record. It's just a housekeeping. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, County Attorney. I'm sorry, everybody, for forgetting this last week. So I'll throw myself on the sard for that. But anyway, at this time, I'd like to place communication 2021-95 on file. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to place communication 2021-95 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And would the clerk please report, record the vote? Well, we have 11 yea and one nay. Motion carries. And at this point in time, we'll look to see if there's any public comment on the phone on any item not on the agenda. Looks pretty quiet out here. There are no calls. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Would every, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nay? None? And motion carries. And I also want to thank everybody. I know I got a card. I lost a brother last week. And, yeah, so I appreciate the card. It was very sweet, and I do thank you. Okay, motion's adjourned, and you all have a great evening. We got the rest of the night ahead of us, right? Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.